Before we start, I'm drawn into this passage in Psalm 145. I think it's good to open up on the Word of God so as to guide us in our meditation this evening. Psalm 145, Psalm 145. "I will extol thee, my God, O king, and I will bless thy name forever. Every day I will bless thee, and I will praise thy name forever and ever. Great is the Lord, and greatly to be praised; his greatness is unsearchable. One generation shall praise thy works to another, and shall declare thy mighty acts. I will speak of the glorious honor of thy majesty and of thy wondrous works; and men shall speak of the might of thy terrible acts, and I will declare thy greatness. They shall abundantly utter the memory of thy great goodness, and shall sing of thy righteousness." Verse 8, "The Lord is gracious and full of compassion, slow to anger, and of great mercy. The Lord is good to all, and his tender mercies are over all his works. All thy works shall praise thee, O Lord, and thy saints shall bless thee. They shall speak of the glory of thy kingdom and talk of thy power, to make known to the sons of men his mighty acts and the glorious majesty of his kingdom." Thy kingdom is an everlasting kingdom, and thy dominion endureth throughout all generations. The Lord upholdeth all that fall, and raises up all those that be bowed down. The eyes of all wait upon thee, and thou givest them their meat in due season. Thou openest thine hand, and satisfiest the desire of every living thing." Verse 17 again, "The Lord is righteous in all his ways and holy in all his works. The Lord is nigh unto all them; it's near unto all them that call upon him, to all that call upon him in truth. He will fulfill the desires of them that fear him; he will also hear their cry, and will save them. The Lord preserved all them that love him, but all the wicked will he destroy. My mouth shall speak the praise of the Lord, and let all flesh bless his holy name forever and ever." As you can see here, dear brothers, dear sisters, on these passages, we can see some of the glorious attributes of our Lord abundant in this verse. We can see the goodness of God, we can see the mercy of God, the compassion of God. He is low to anger. We can see verse 3, for example, "Great is the Lord, and he is greatly to be praised." He is, he is a great God. Tonight, in our study today, we'll be looking and we'll be, we'll be meditating on the attributes of God, the character of our Lord. So before we start, let us pray. Lord, we thank you now again, as we come back again in prayer, O Lord, understanding that all these things are, are big things for us. They are just things that are discerned spiritually, O Lord. But Lord, today, we pray that the Spirit will open our eyes, that we may behold the wonderful things, the wondrous things out of your law today, that we may see you through our Lord and Savior Jesus Christ. And as the passage that was, that we have read just a while ago, "All the saints shall bless thee. We bless thee, O Lord; we praise thee, O God. Be with us now as we study, in Christ's name. Amen. So I'm drawn on that passage here, as we can see on Psalm 145, we can see some of the attributes of our Lord. But before we start, let us do a quick recap on your, on your handout here. So I've put in some box points there, so we can, in a way, find out where we are heading, what we have discussed so far, and where we are heading for today. We discussed last week that God is God, the Lord is Lord. He is the incomprehensible one, meaning we cannot fully grasp everything about God. God is infinite in everything. If we know everything about God, then we are God. Yet we are not. We are just mere creatures. I love how some of the hymns would actually tell us, "Such a wretch as I," or "Such a worm as I." We are, we are just mere creatures of our Lord. God is God. He is the incomprehensible one. Yet by God, yet God by his mercies chose to reveal himself to us. We cannot fully know everything about God, yet by his mercies, he showed something about him to us. I made a point that that is actually a gracious act of our Lord. If he did not reveal everything about himself, if he did not reveal anything about himself, he is still God. Nothing has changed. Yet by his mercy, by his grace, he chose to reveal himself to us, especially to his church, as we look upon the Scripture of God. We look at as well, God revealed himself in two ways, in two ways. Number one, we call that the general revelation of God. General revelation of God tells us about the majesty of our God as the Creator. He created all things. We can look upon the nature, we can look upon the mountain, we can look upon the universe and say, "There is God." But also note that we, we make a point, we made a point, that general revelation is actually limited, is actually limited. We know that we can know something about the Creator when we look upon the mountains and the skies, but we cannot know anything, how to be saved. For example, we, number two here, we will look at that, so general revelation. Number two, he revealed himself particularly to us through the Scripture. Jesus is the ultimate revelation of God. All his works and deeds are inscripturated for us. His work of redemption is particularly visible to us, explained to us, revealed to us through the Scripture. The way of salvation can be known through the Scriptures. Brothers and sisters, when, when people look at the stars and the mountains, they don't think about the Trinity at all. Trinity, for example, is a doctrine that is found specifically on the Bible, specifically on the Word of God. The doctrine about Jesus Christ is found in the Scripture. And some of, one of our brothers here says like, "Oh, actually, that was a very good point. I was, if, if you don't stop, I will, I'm about to be a missionary." But because he said, "We need people to tell about the wonderful grace of God," because that is really the point of general revelation. There are people who doesn't know anything about the Lord, and our task, our commission, is to, to preach and proclaim the gospel to the ends of the earth. And let me tell you, just a quick aside here, the ends of the earth may not just be country. Maybe your neighbor, your neighbor doesn't know anything about the Scripture at all. If they don't know about Jesus Christ, how can they be saved? If they don't know the way of salvation, how then can they be saved? We, they need to know, we need to know what we know. They need to know the gospel of our Lord, and that is found in the Word of God. So that's what we discuss. It is wonderful things here, there on, on session number one. But we look now on session number two today, and we are a bit more focused this time. We are looking now, yes, God revealed himself through the Scripture, but also we are categorizing things now and say, "We, God revealed himself to us in three ways, in three ways." Number one, and that is what we will be looking today, and hopefully next week. I may not be able to finish the whole thing. So number one, he will, God revealed himself to us through his attributes, his character. We will discuss that today and next week. Number two, God revealed himself to us through his names, Yahweh, "I am that I am." It is a revelation of who God is. Remember, we did not put a name to God. We did not name God. God, God revealed his name to us. That is something, and we will discuss that as well later. He revealed his name to us. And then lastly, we will discuss his works as well, his works. His works in creation, his work in salvation, and his work in providence. And Michael is going to say, "That's a lot, that's a lot. It's a lot. We're talking about God. We're talking, not talking about mere science, or mere physics, or mere calculus. We're talking about our Lord." But my goal today is, hopefully, we can summarize things and put it simply, so we may know something about God, and we may adore our Lord. That is the great purpose for this session. So, as mentioned today, we'll be looking at the attributes of God, attributes of God. And that, for simplicity here, we can understand the attributes of God, his characters and his perfections in two ways, in two ways. And I'm classifying this into two things, incomunicable attributes and communicable attributes. Okay? So hopefully, we are still treading along. Okay, God revealed himself to us, general revelation, a specific revelation. Specific revelation, we're looking at his names, his, his names, his character, his work. On his character or his attribute, we're classifying that into two things, incomunicable attributes and communicable attributes. Hopefully, we are still on the roadmap here on our discussion. So let's go now. Just a quick words here. What do we mean by the word "attributes"? I think this is just really the more familiar way by which theologian and some seminary professors, or, or in general, in an ecclesiastical setup, or church setting, this is the word that we use. It is a way for us humans to understand the language, in our language, the character of God. If you look at the word "attributes" of God, there is no word "attributes" of God, okay, in the Scripture, okay? It's like one of those words as far as like Trinity, et cetera, okay? But it is just a way for us to classify, make it understandable and simple for us. So we look at the attributes of God. Other terms, if you read some of the textbook here, or some of the systematic theology books, like those big books there, okay? So they will be using terms such as perfections, virtues, properties, and excellences, excellencies. Each of these terms can be useful, but the more common way for us is to refer to these characters of God as the attributes of God, the attributes of God, okay? By essence here, we mean that it is his nature, it is this nature, it is who he is. God is good, for example. We'll be looking at the character of God's goodness. We don't, we do not just say that God is good because he does good. We are actually saying that God is good. The essence, the whole understanding of goodness is, is found on our Lord. He is the essence of goodness. He is good. When we say he is holy, we don't, we do not just say, "He does things that are holy." We actually says, "In his essence, in his nature," when we look upon God face to face one day, we look upon him and say, "He is holy. He is the na, is the essence of holiness." I think big stuff here for us, I know, but we look at this as the attributes of God. It's his nature, who he is. Sorry. Why do we have to classify the attributes of God? Why do we have to classify the attributes of, attributes of God in two ways? Again, the Scripture does not reveal any way of doing it. And if you read through some of the systematic theology books, they will classify many things. I've, I've used many references there, and I put it in for you as well. They, they classify many things differently, okay? But at least for us, in our case, for ordinary people like us, we can classify that for simplicity in two ways, incomunicable and communicable. Incommunicable attributes are attributes of God, characters of God, his perfections in his excellences that is found in himself alone. He does not share that to anyone, okay? So that is incommunicable attributes. Under incommunicable attributes, we will discuss today, independence, immutability, and infinity. Secondly, we have communicable attributes here, and those are the attributes that he shared with us. For example, God is spirit, and we do have a spirit. We do have a soul. We have, we are spiritual beings, okay? God has intellectual attributes. He has wisdom. In some way, in some little portion, God shares that attribute to us. We know something. We can have wisdom as well. So in very simple manner here, we're saying, we're dividing our session today and next week. On number one, we'll be looking at incommunicable attributes, those attributes that God do not share at all to his creatures. These characters belong to God alone. If you are God, you have those attributes as well, but there is no God. There is only one God in heaven and earth. Those attributes belong to him alone. I like this. This is one of the catechism, one of the classic catechism, and Spurgeon used this as well. "What is God? What is God?" And sometimes, you know, some of your young kids will actually question that as well, will ask that question to you. "Dad, mom, what is God? Who is God?" And that is a very basic, fundamental question. And the answer here is, "God is spirit, infinite, eternal, unchangeable in his being, wisdom, power, holiness, justice, goodness, and truth." I want to point out here, as we give a definition of what is God, or who God is, we actually look upon the attributes of our Lord. So quick aside here, if you want to know God, you need to know, you need to understand who he is, his character, his goodness, his holiness. And do you want to worship God? Then you need to understand and appreciate all the more the goodness, the power, the majesty of our God. So that is what we have here. Why do we have to classify this in two ways? It's just easier for us. It's just easier for us. What are some reminders for us as we study this section? I've got few, four things here for us. Number one, I know this study can be a bit theological in a way, can be a bit more classroom type, lecture type, but we must understand, number one, biblical. All the attributes that we will be discussing are based upon God's revelation. It's based upon the revelation of God found on the Scripture. Secondly, essential. What do we mean? God is one in essence. Yes, we are discussing about the infinity, infinity of God. We're discussing about the goodness of God, the holiness of God, righteousness of God, love of God. We must not think that God has those parts in the same way that I have parts. I have my arms, my legs, my head, okay? God is, doesn't have parts. God is one. What do we mean by this? When we talk about the holiness of God, we talk about the holy wrath, holy mercy, all at the same time, okay? Do you understand where I'm coming from? We are, we cannot partition God and say, "Okay, this is something about God," and we move on to the next topic. But it is just easier for us to understand and appreciate each of the character of our Lord. But the point is, we must understand that God is one. His essence is one. His love is a merciful love. His, his wrath is a merciful wrath. His power is infinite, and his power is gracious power, all at the same time. Hopefully, we get that point. It is essential, just to kind of give a word to this one. Thirdly, Christological as well. We made a point that God, Jesus is the supreme revelation of who God is, of who God is. Look at 2 Corinthians, chapter 4, verse 5. "For we preach not ourselves, but Jesus Christ the Lord and ourselves, your servants for Jesus. For God, who commanded the light to shine out of darkness, has shined in our hearts, to give light, to give the light of the knowledge of the glory of God in the face of Jesus Christ." The knowledge of the glory of God is found where? Here, in the face of Jesus Christ. So we look upon the attributes of God, and we look upon Jesus Christ as the supreme manifestation of God's attribute. So we look at this biblical, essential, Christological. Lastly, here, we look at this as doxological, doxological. What do we mean by this? The point of our study is not mere intellectual knowledge, not just knowledge, but knowledge and understanding of God that brings forth adoration. Knowledge of God that says, "Oh, I know about God," and that is not stacked on your head. "Oh, I know about God, and I know it from my heart. Praise be to God." That is what we want. "All the saints shall bless thee." And that is what we want here, as we finish our study, to give glory to our God. Let's jump in now to the incommunicable attributes of God. So our main study for today. I know I do have many passages there for you. I've written them down for your own study as well, so please have a look in your own time and compare scriptures with scriptures. Also, I've put in some of the output of my study in a way, some of the references that I've used. I may not agree to the everyone here. They may belong to different theological tradition, but I find them to be very useful in this case. So I suggest, if I'm using this, and they, because they are very good resource on its, on its own, okay? So just a quick aside here for you. So let's look at this. We'll be looking at three things here, independence of God, immutability of God, and infinity of God. So look at this. It's all negative, actually. He is not dependent, dependent. He is not mutable. He is not finite. I'm going to divide our study into few things here. We'll look at the definition. We'll look at the scriptural presentation, how it is actually quoted in the Scripture, and some scripture passages for you. We'll look at some of the application for us as well, okay? So three things there, definition, scriptural presentation, application. Okay, number one, we look at the independence of God. It's, it's, we've said this a number of times, we are not an independent Baptist church. We are a dependent Baptist church. We are depending upon our Lord. But God alone is the independent one. God alone can live by himself. Can I just have a breaking news for you? God doesn't need you. God doesn't need us at all. He is the God of heaven and earth. We are living, we are praising, we are worshiping a God who can live by himself. Most of us, we cannot live on our own, feeling sickly, actually, this, this morning. And I was like, "Ah, I think I might need some," and I'm just asking Eliza to give me the panel. I can do it, but I'm just depending on her sometimes. Okay, sorry. But we are, we are dependent. We are dependent most of the time, okay? But God alone is the, the independent one. It refers to here as well, the self-existence of God, or on theological terms, the assiety of God. The life definition here, the life and existence of God is grounded upon himself. Children, kids, some of you, and my young Isabel has always asked questions now as well. You know, but let me say, "Dad, where do you come from?" Or, "I come from my mom and dad." And they were, "Where does he come from?" "I, they come from my mom and dad." They, "Where does he?" And ultimately, we put, put everything back to Adam. Oh, and we say, "Where does Adam come from?" Well, he comes from God. God created Adam. And who created God? We actually say, "No one created God, our Lord. He is self-existing. He is not the created one. He is the creator of everything in heaven and in earth. God exists by himself." As you can look at this, every, some dictionary here for you, "All, God is self-existent. All other spirits are created, and so have a beginning. They owe their existence to another. God does not depend upon the world or anyone in it for existence. God is undervive. He is necessary. He is non-dependent existence." Understanding that God is non-contingent helps to understand how God is unlimited by anything. Let me question you. Let me ask you, is God, is the, is your God that God? Is your God the, the independent God, God who doesn't, who, who doesn't need anything from us? And you know, what a, what a privilege, really. I cannot, but we go to the application quickly. What a privilege here that the Lord has given us. He doesn't need us at all. Yet by his mercy, by his grace, he allowed us to what? To serve him. I think that is a, that is a, that is a trigger for us to serve the Lord all the more, to give everything to the Lord all the more until our last dying breath. He doesn't need us. Yet by his mercy, by his grace, he allowed us to, to work with him, to partner with him in this great work of redemption in a way by which we can proclaim the gospel to the ends of the earth, to serve him now, even in a local church, to serve him now in capacity that the Lord has given him. Serve the Lord for those who are maybe, maybe advanced in years, serve the Lord. For those who are, have strength, serve the Lord. Kids, for you, young children, serve the Lord all your life. He deserves everything. I cannot but preach, I'm sorry. Let's move on. Let's go to the lecture. God is undervive. He is undervive. But look at this, also some scriptural presentation for us. His existence is by himself. Genesis, chapter 1, verse 1, "In the beginning..." Who was there? God was there. "In the eternity past, God is there." Psalm 20, verse 2, "Before the mountains were brought forth, ever thou hast formed the earth and the world, even from everlasting to everlasting, thou art God." God was not crowned as God, as if he was crowned as king, in a kingly, in a human terms. In the eternity past, God is God. We cannot make God God in a way. God is God, and sometimes that is what we need to proclaim to, to those who don't believe in God, to those who doesn't have a knowledge of God. God is, God is God. He exists by himself. We look at, "I am that I am," on the name of our Lord. But in Exodus, chapter 3, verse 14 here, the Lord says, "My," the God said unto Moses, "My name is 'I am that I am.'" It tells us about the eternality of our Lord. He is there, existing before the ages, before the foundations of the world. This is one good quote here, "In the beginning, God, there was a time, if time it could be called, when God, in the unity of his nature, dwelt alone." He is by himself, alone, in the eternity past. "In the beginning was God. There was no heaven, where his glory is now particularly manifested. There was no earth to engage his attention. There were no angels to him, his praise; no universe to uphold by the word of his power. There was nothing. There was no one but God. And that was not for a day only. That was not for a year. It is for everlasting. During eternity past, God was alone, self-contained, self-sufficient, self-satisfied, in need of nothing." Oh, praise God. That is the God that we serve, dear brothers. That is the God that we look upon and worship. That is the God that we will save face to face one day. Shouldn't we worship God all the more? Shouldn't we praise him and dedicate our life all the more? Because we are not worshiping a puny little God, a God that is made from our hands. We are worshiping the God who is there, who was there from beginning, from eternity to eternity. He is, he exists by himself. Also here, some scriptural, scriptural presentation for us, "He is a living God." We know that. He is not a dead God. I think Brother Doug Kerr mentioned that as well. Plato is dead. Socrates is dead. All the philosophers are dead. All the gods and goddesses are dead, or figment of our imagination. Only God alone lives. He is a living God. Oh, brothers, you're serving a living God. I think that is, again, a, 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 a way for us to live properly, to serve the Lord, that the Lord whom we are serving knows us. He lives. And lastly, here, "All life in this world derives from him. Your life comes from God." We can look at verse 25 of Acts 17 here, down at the bottom of the page here. Acts 17, verse 25. "Neither is he worshiped with man's hand, as though he needed anything, seeing he giveth to all life and breath and all things; for in him we live and move and have our being." As one of our poets, of your own poets have said, "For we also are his offspring. For in him we live and move and have our being." You are living today because of the graciousness and the mercies of our Lord. Every breath that we breathe is from the Lord, is from the Lord. I know we've touched on this as well. He does not need anything from mankind. Mankind needs him on the other end. We, the Lord doesn't need us, but we, we need the Lord. You know we need the Lord. We, we, we always ask that the Lord will be with us. We've quoted this for Psalm 50 as well. "For every beast of the forest is mine, and the cattle upon thousand hills is mine," says the Lord. For every beast of the forest is mine, and the cattle upon thousand hills is mine, says the Lord. The Lord doesn't need us, but we need him, we need him. Note here, some people may say, oh, why do you think God created Adam? And some may say, because God is lonely, God is lonely. I don't, I think that's wrong. I, I, I think that's blasphemy, was really even. God is not lonely, God doesn't need us. He, he, if he exists in the eternity past by himself, all glorious, all wonderful, living in a, in a, in a light that is unapproachable. The same, he doesn't need us, he doesn't need us, dear brothers, dear sisters. He is not lonely. But you know what? He's gracious, he's gracious. He allowed, he created us by his mercies and by his grace to show his love to us, to show and demonstrate his love to us. Up to what point? To the point that even if we sin, even if, even if we are guilty, even if we are, we are hell-deserving, God sent for his son to die for us. I think that is marvelous grace, grace upon grace. Lastly here. The end or goal of everything is the glory of God. The end or goal of everything here is the glory of our Lord. Hopefully that is something that we may always remember. Some applications here for us. This doctrine ought to humble us, really, and to think of us as just mere humans, mere humans. I had the privilege to, to work with very good companies, very good people in, in America. And some of them are just really amazing, you know, in a way, in a, in how they think of themselves as, you know, I'm a self-made man, self-made man. No, 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 we are nothing. We are brothers, sisters, friends. We, we have nothing to brag about. Instead, look at this, we must ascribe all the glory and praise to our God. He is the independent God. This doctrine ought to give us joy as well, that God, even though he does not need us, yet he shared his presence to us. He created us and saved us, and he will be with us for all eternity. I think that's a blessing for us. He allowed to share his love to us, to us, to us, to us, mere human, to us sinners. And he allowed his infinite presence to be, to be with us forever. And lastly here, this doctrine should align the purpose, the end, the goal, the aim, the objective of our lives. What is our highest aspiration? Is it for the glory of God? Young boys, young girls, children, what is the purpose of your life? Do not, do not go away on the real purpose of life. The real purpose of life is not to gain money, not to accumulate money and things, not to gain popularity, not to be, you know, the, the cool kids in town. The aim of our life is the aim of God himself, the glory of God. That is what we want, that is what our life should be. And for that is true, not only for young boys and young girls here, but to each and every one of us. God is independent, God is independent. Secondly here, God is not only dependent to anyone, but he is immutable as well. To mutate is to change. But God is not mutable. He does not change at all. He is unable to change. Look at this, some definition here. It is the perfection of God by which he is devoid of all change, not only in his being, but also in his perfections, in his purposes, in his promise. He is, he will not change. In, in his goodness, you cannot add more goodness to God. Because if you add more goodness to God, more glory, in a way, you cannot add more, you cannot increase the goodness of God through your praise in a way, no. No, God is God already. But the wonder of this is really, we have to ascribe glory to our Lord. We have to acknowledge that God is God. But whatever we do, it doesn't add up as if this is God on this level, if we praise him, oh, this is on this level. No, he is by default. He is unchanging God. He is goodness, he is good by himself. He, we cannot add anything to the perfection of God. He is perfect already, can you add anything to something perfect already? If you add something to perfect, then that is imperfect. So but God is perfect. God's immutability is his perfect, unchangeability in his essence, in his character, and his purpose, and his promise. Look at this. He ascribed here as to be eternally the same. Psalm hundred-two, Psalm hundred-two here, verse twenty-six. They shall perish, but thou shalt endure. Yea, all of them shall wax all like a garment, as a vesture shalt thou change them, and they shall be changed, but thou art the same, and thy years shall have no end. Our Lord will be the same Lord. He is an unchanging God. He is an immutable God, he will not change. He is the first and the last, on what he is at the beginning. He will be the same at the end as well. This is Isaiah forty-one, for example. I, the Lord, the first, and with the last, I am he. You know, in Revelation, he is the Alpha and the Omega. What is the point? He's the beginning and the end. But also the point is, he is the same as well from beginning to the end. He is not like a God, for example, in the Greek gods and goddesses, where, where at the whim of the, of Zeus, for example, he might change, he might change his direction, he must, might change his purpose, he might change his, his anger, his, his emotion. No, God does not change at all. He does not change his purpose in his covenant to his people. He does not change in his being as well. Look at James, chapter one, verse seventeen. Every good gift and every perfect gift is from above, and cometh down from the father of lights, with whom is no variableness, neither shadow of turning. He does not change, he does not change. He is the same forever and ever. We, we have a particular question here. But what, what do we mean, for example, when God says, God repents? We have a, we, we can have a better discussion on that. But that is a, a human way to say, God, God is placed on, on the action of his people. A God in a human way is able to, in a way, ability for God to look upon the time and, and be gracious and be merciful to his people. But at his essence, God does not change at all. Some application for us here. What we worship is God who is perfect in his being. He is not becoming God every day. You know, to us, some of those self-help, self-improvement books say, oh, you are becoming. You are, you know, you are, you are transcending yourself, you are improving one day at a time. In my line of work, one of the things that we, they always tell us, and I always tell to, to my university students as well, continuously improve, improve every day. Do your work, if you're, you know, I'm doing in IT stuff, so practice every day, do your labs every day, so that you improve. But God doesn't improve to be God. God is God. He is the same from beginning to end. Because God is God, God is not changing. There are truths as well that we hold dear, that still, will still be the same no matter what time we are in, the people that we are with, and the circumstance of our lives. What do we mean by this? There are truths that matter. There are truths that are true, true with, in regards of the time, in regards of the people who are with, we with, and in regards to the circumstance of our life. Truths that are the same. Truths, for example, that God is holy. God is holy. That truth, for example, that sin is sin. It doesn't matter whether it's at the beginning or at the end of time, God is the same. And some truths are, all truths are the same regardless of time. Lastly here. What a comfort we have, what a comfort, comfort we have. God's promise is always true, and he will deliver. We can always rely on him and trust on him. I think there's a particular application here for us. You know, the God that Abraham trusted? He's the same God that we can trust today. We have seen all the purposes of God accomplished in the Old Testament. We have seen the many prophecies of our Lord done, taken, accomplished in the New Testament. We can always rely upon him now as well. And you know what, what a comfort is this for us, even for tomorrow? Do you know what's going to happen tomorrow? I'm not sure, I may be sick tomorrow, but, and I might give you some virus, I'm sorry. But I don't know what's going to happen tomorrow, but we have the same God still. And you know what? Whatever happens in this world, whoever is in the parliament, whoever is in, in the government, whoever is the next superpower, you know what remains the same? Tell me, God is? God, God is God. Shouldn't this be embolden us? Shouldn't this drive us to follow the Lord until the very end? Why? Because we have a God that does not change at all. Oh, today you may be suffering, today you may have affliction, today you may have many things. But God is the same. He answers us, he gives provision to us, we can trust him. We have, you've trusted him many times in the future, you've tested him. We can say, God tried and tested yesterday. But even now, we can say, tried and tested today, and even tomorrow, tried and tested. We can trust on the Lord. That's why we say in Proverbs, trust in the Lord with all your heart. Lean not on your own understanding. What a comfort we have. Human nature can, cannot be relied upon, as one of the author here says, but God can. However unstable I may be, we change, we always change. However fecal my friends may prove, may prove, God changes not. If he varied as we do, if he willed one thing today and another tomorrow, if he changed his mind, if he were controlled by Caprice, who could confide in him? But oh, praise to his glorious name, he is ever the same. God is the same. What a glorious truth that we have here. As I get something to think about here, and we can deal that on the next, on some, sometime in the future. We look at independence of God, the immutability of God, and lastly now, the infinity of God. And we can look at this in three things as well. And hopefully we can finish this in the next ten minutes or so. I may jump on some points here for the sake of time. Infinity, God is not dependent, God is not mutable, but God is also not finite as well. Infinity refers to the boundlessness of God. God is infinite. He, one of the theologians said it this way, God is infinite, or is it infinite? Yeah, whatever, okay? God is infinite. This means not only that God is not unlimited, but that he is unlimitable, unlimitable. We cannot limit God. In this respect, God is unlike anything we experience. Even those things that common sense once told us are infinite, are boundless, are now seen to have limits. The infinity of God, however, speaks of a limitless being. We talk about the universe as, universe seems to be infinite, limitless. But we know, we know it has limit as well. But God is not so. He is, he is unlimited, he is infinite. We can refer to God in infinite, God's infinity in three ways, and we'll pass through this quickly. Number one, his omnipresence or his immensity. Number two, his omniscience or his, or his all-knowing. Lastly here, his omnipotence, his omnipotence. Let's look at this, immensity, immensity. The point here of immensity is that God is everywhere. Erickson said it this way, he cannot be localized at a particular point. The point here is that nowhere within the creation, God is inaccessible. God is present in every point of space with his whole being. God is everywhere, God is everywhere. We cannot hide from the presence of God. If we are, if we close our eyes in our bedroom and with turn of the light, God is there. If we move to Antarctica, there's some people there as well, but God is still there. If by chance a man is able to travel in Mars in the future, God is there as well. If we live, God is there. If we die, God is there. God is everywhere. As we can see this, again, this is what we call as your omnipresence of God as well. God is in every location. Some scriptural presentation here as well. But God, we, verse, First Kings, First Kings, chapter eight, verse twenty-seven. First Kings, chapter eight, verse twenty-seven, God, but God will, but will God indeed dwell on the earth? Behold, the heaven of heavens cannot contain thee; how much less is this house that I have built in? This is a famous passage on Psalms. Psalm hundred thirty-nine, verse seven to eight. Where shall I go from thy spirit? Or where shall I flee from thy presence? If I ascend up into heaven, thou art there. If I make my bed in hell, behold, thou art there. God is present everywhere. Let me just jump in quickly here. I know we do have several scriptural passages there for you. Please, you can, you can look that as well, and some of them is, we've quoted them already. Look at this, an application for us. Let us cherish the presence of God. God is there, God is there. Maybe you've forgotten, maybe you think that you're all alone. Maybe you think that my friends left me, my family left me, I got nothing. We got God, God is everywhere. In times of joy, praise the Lord, God is there. In times of suffering, God is there with you as well. When you sin, brothers, sisters, friends, God is there as well. In times of grace, God is there as well. So let us cherish the presence of our Lord. Secondly here, let the presence of God be our motivation, be a motivation for our sanctification. I would put in here for you a Latin words, coram Deo, coram Deo. Meaning here, let us live in the face of God, as if God is there. Because God is not only as if there, God is here with us. He can see you, he is with us. And let us be a motive for us to, for motive for us for sanctification. Let us continue, as Paul would say, to run the race, as, as the writer of the Hebrew as well, said as well. Let's continue to follow our Lord. So here we can see his immensity or his omnipresence. Infinity, number two here, second infinity, his, is his omniscience. Science here means knowledge. This attribute refers to God's knowledge. He has unlimited knowledge, he is infinite in knowledge. I'm gonna quickly go through, sorry, let's go to quick definition here. God fully knows himself, all things and actual and possible. God fully knows himself. That's one of the scriptural presentation for you. God alone has complete knowledge of himself. God alone has complete knowledge of himself. He alone has that complete exhaustive knowledge about himself. We cannot have that knowledge. If we do, then we are God. Again, it ought to humble us, really. And for preachers like me, for students of the Bible like me, that is a humbling point for me. I love to study, I love to be in my room, in my office, reading through the books, but I have to stop at a point and say, this is too much for me. This is our Lord. I am, I am not just only studying here, I should worship my Lord and my God. That is the, that is true for us as well. God has complete knowledge of himself, and the Trinity has complete knowledge of God as well. Looking at Matthew eleven, twenty-seven here, and First Corinthians, chapter two, verse ten. So God has complete knowledge of himself, but also God knows everything that is to be known. It's amazing, one, one person, he has PhD, and he said to me, you know what, Michael? When you have PhD, it just tells you that you are, you're full. You don't have that, not, not knowledge to everything. You just only, you just only specialize on one thing, and other things, you don't have any knowledge, okay? So I think that's a good way for us to say, like, hey, some people may have their, oh, double, I have a friend that has double PhD, double doctor. I always call him Doctor Doctor. But he, he doesn't know everything. I mean, it's good to chat with him all the time, because I've learned something, but he doesn't know anything that needs to be known. God alone need, knows everything that needs to be known. All the things that are known and those, those things that are not known to us. Proverbs fifteen, verse three, the eyes of the Lord are in every place, beholding the evil and the good, telling us that the Lord knows everything. Verse five of Telling us that, that the Lord knows everything. Verse five of hundred, Psalm hundred forty seven as well. Uh, we've read this a while ago, great is our Lord, his understanding is infinite. And we got few things here as well. God knows all the possibilities, all the certainties, all things that could have happened, all things that has happened. He knows the past and the future. In, in reality, there is no past, present, future to God. It is a human concept. It's a human time, it's a human concept. It's was, it's one way for us to understand the flow of events. But God, God has nothing like that. He knows the past, the future, and the present. Acts fifteen, verse eighteen, know unto God all his, are all his works from beginning of the world. God has exhaustive knowledge of everything, but he has knowledge of you as well, of you. You are his creation. He knows you. He knows you. And I think that is something that we can, we can, uh, glory about, and we can, uh, we can. We can have comfort as well. Sometimes you don't understand yourself. Sometimes you, you, you really love the Lord. You do, sincerely, honestly. But sometimes you fail. Sometimes you fail. Sometimes you, you, you sin, uh, uh, some, most, that's something, most of the time we sin. But God knows you. God knows you. We may not understand the whole thing, but God knows you. He knows the frame of your, uh, being. Psalm hundred three, I know I don't have it here. Psalm hundred three, verse fourteen, for he knoweth our frame, he remembers that we are dust. He knows us, he knows us. Quick application here for us, it's comfort for God's people. He knows, he knows, he knows. Uh, we cannot go back to God in prayer and say, Lord, you know, something's happening, and, and he was like, oh, really? Uh, I didn't, I didn't, I didn't know anything about that. Well, we, we cannot, we cannot say to God, Lord FYI. He knows, he knows. What a comfort for us. We may, I'm looking at you now, and I may say, we don't have the same struggle, we don't have the same, uh, things that goes through our life. I don't know, not, I do not know what's going on in your life, but God knows, God knows. Is that a comfort for each and every one of us? He knows their suffering, he knows all the struggles in your life, he knows your strength, he knows your weaknesses, he knows, he knows. Also, he comfort for God's people, but also caution against hidden sin, uh, as well. Oh, he knows, he knows. And I think, i- i- and if you are not aware on some of the theological things happening. There are some pastors, for example, in America that has been uncovered, uh, that they do have hidden sins in their lives. Hidden things, hidden relationship, and they have to be kicked out of the pulpit. Oh, brothers, sisters, it's a caution for us against hidden sin. God knows, God knows. You may think and say, I, I know, I don't, I, I'm, I look okay, but God knows the thoughts of our hearts. It's caution against sin, he knows, but also courage to be bold for God as well. It's give us, it gives us courage to be, to be bold for God, to be, to, because God knows. He knows, for example, and, uh, uh, just a little, um, uh, testimony here, really. Uh, when, uh, when I was young, uh, uh, you cannot find me here, really. Uh, uh, I stay to be hidden there. I don't talk to people. Uh, I'm, I'm very introvert. I, I don't wanna talk to people, I don't. But you, you know what, and sometimes Elijah would say, you know, you, you're different when you, when you hear. But I, I know, I can't do it, really. And, and I, I have to say that, and to tell you, I, I don't come in here and having all this, you know, I, I don't prefer to be here. I'd rather listen to people. I'd rather hear and meditate upon the word of God, sitting there. Uh, but you know what? The God knows. God knows the, the weaknesses. And, uh, sometimes I would admire people, uh, with very good, good rhetoric, for example. Good, 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 good way of flow of words. And sometimes, you know what, I'll say, oh, Lord, I wish I can do that too. Uh, I wish I can explain things like that too, but, uh, that's, that's, uh, he knows, he knows our, he knows, he knows us. He knows us. That's why we can come in here and be bold and say, proclaim the message of God, because he knows everything about God, about us. And that's an encouragement for you as well. You may say, I can do it, I can do it. Brother, sister, God knows. Do it for the glory of God. He knows, he knows you, and he knows that he can use you for his glory as well. He knows his only, his, his imminence, his immensity, his, uh, he is everywhere, he's omnipresent. He's omniscient, he knows all things. Lastly, here, as we end, his, his infinity, his infinity. His omnipotence. Infinity, number three, his sovereignty over all things. He is, and he is a sovereign Lord. He can do everything. He is not bound by anyone. He's not like, I'm sorry, uh, being political here, no, 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 uh, but just on stuff happening. Uh, he is not like, for example, President Trump and say, I told you not to do it. Okay, so, but again, that's not a political statement, okay, against, uh, whatever is happening to the polit- uh, politics in Middle East and war on Middle East, okay? Uh, but he's not like that. When God says, stop, we stop. When God says to the mountain, you go up until this, hide, and no more, the mountain says, yes. And when you, when the Lord says to the ocean, you go all the way here, and the mountains, or the ocean says, yes. Everyone obeys the Lord. You know what? Even God told you to bow down now, he can do so as well, and you will bow down. And one day, all of us will bow down to the majesty of our Lord. All of us will worship our God. Some of us will worship God, and hopefully all of us here will worship God and bow down, because we have seen the grace of God. But some of us, and dear friends, maybe still those who may be listening as well, you are resisting God. You are saying, no, God, I will not serve you. I will not bow down myself to you. You know what? You will bow down to our Lord. He is an omnipotent Lord. He's sovereign over all things. He is the absolute and highest causality. He is the source and cause of all things that happens in this world. God is the supreme cause of everything. I know we do have several questions that may be related, uh, to this. But some scriptural presentation for you. God has unlimited power to do his will. Look at this, Psalm hundred fifteen, verse three. But our God is in the heavens. He had done whatsoever he had pleased. Brothers, can you see that? Can you read that verse for us? He had done whatsoever he had pleased. No one can say to God, no, Lord, you cannot do this. We say, no, he does whatever he pleased. Where is he located? He is up in the heavens. Who he is? He is God. He is God. Our God is in the heavens. He had done whatsoever he had pleased. And Psalm hundred thirty five for us, I know that the Lord is great, and that our Lord is above all gods here. He is unlimited in his power, and we have further passages there for you. I love Jeremiah thirty two, verse seventeen, ah, Lord God, thou hast made the heavens and the earth. Nothing is too difficult, uh, for you. Uh, shouldn't be a good reminder for us, this mid-week, middle of the week already, and some of us may say. Ah, I thought it was Friday already, it's just too much happening. Uh, uh, shouldn't this encourage us to ask the Lord for strength as well? He's the source of all strength. He is the source of everything. Should we, um, should we ask the Lord for strength, because he is all-powerful? Some applications for us here, we must as- ascribe absolute sovereignty to our Lord. God is God. And when you are God, you want to be absolutely sovereign as well, okay? But we say, God is God. God alone is the absolute sovereign one. He is the almighty God. Lastly, here, we must trust in him in times of joy, in times of sorrow, in times of turmoil and peace. Who is in control? Not the people in the White House, not the people in Canberra. And it was funny, to be honest with you, uh, people like telling, oh, lots of stuff is happening, lots of stuff happening. Uh, it's gonna be the end of the world, and I was like, I don't know. I came from a worse place. This is heaven to me. I don't know what you're talking about. I'm getting ready to go on and move on. Uh, but you know what? God is in control. God is in control, whatever happens here in Adelaide, whatever happens here in that world, in that world map there, whatever happens. God is in control. He has the whole world where? In his hands. He has the whole world in his hands. Oh, he has the whole world in his hands. So today, we look at the incommunicable attributes of God. We look at God's independence. He doesn't need us. He's dependent, independent by himself. We look at the, I have to go back to my immutability of God. God does not change. He will not change. He's the same. Today, yesterday, and forever. And lastly, he's infinite as well. He is boundless. We cannot contain God to. I know we do have many questions here related for us, but how about we pray and give glory to our Lord? Let me just read Romans eleven thirty three here as we end. Romans eleven, verse thirty three, all the way to thirty six here. Oh, the depth of the riches, both of the wisdom and the knowledge of God, how unsearchable are his judgments. And his ways past finding out, for who had known the mind of the Lord, or who had been his counselor? Or who had first given to him, it shall be recompense unto him, for of him, and through him. And to him are all things, to him be glory forever. Amen. Let us pray. Lord, we thank you, Lord, and as we have a sneak peek of who you are, oh, Lord. We understand that our time here is, is may, is not enough, Lord, really, for us to get to know more about you. But you have reserved many days in our life to read your word. And also the time eternity that we will get to know more of you each day in eternity, forever and ever, oh, Lord. What a joy that we have now, oh, Lord, and what a joy it will be, much better joy when we see you, Lord, face to face. Lord, as we look upon some of those precious truths, oh, Lord, your goodness, that you are independent God. That you are a sovereign Lord, that you are infinite Lord, oh, Lord, may we bow down in majesty. Uh, bow down in wonder to you, oh, Lord, how great you are, oh, God. And Lord, as we look upon ourselves as well, who are we? Who are we? Yet by your mercy, by your grace, oh, Lord, you have called us, you have, uh, saved us. And you will be with us in eternity future as well, oh, Lord. What a grace upon grace that we have. We thank you, Lord, that you don't change at all. We can rely upon you. You are a tried and tested God. We can try, we can test you, and you will deliver, oh, Lord. Be with us in many, uh, many sufferings in our life, many trials and, and, uh, things, Lord. That, um, afflicts us. Be with us, Lord. We can trust in you. We can rely upon you. Strengthen us, because you are the source of all strength. Lord, we worship you. We have no application really, but to bow down before you to the glory of your majesty. And to look upon our Savior, Jesus Christ, who is omnipotent, who knows all things. Who has been gracious to us and condescended in the lowest level. He became man like us. And save us, so that we will be with you. You could have left us on your, on our own. Burning in eternal condemnation, yet here we are, found in Christ, found in Christ. We thank you, Lord, now. Be with us, in Christ's name. Amen, amen.